I guess we'll work on that later.
We're both dummies.
Your own.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 3 meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission and call this meeting to order. Can we have confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act notice has been provided?
Yes, I can confirm the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean?
I'll call Rohl to see who's present. Commissioner Seidell, Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Paget.
Present.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Vice Chair Farber.
Here.
And Chair Waters is absent.
He didn't.
Oh, Mr. Van Covern.
Here. I can leave.
These are right in.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting of May 6? Are there any revisions? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 6 meeting of the Planning Commission. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. New business?
For new business, we don't have any quasi judicial public hearings or matters this afternoon. We do have a legislative matter, which is an application for a zoning text amendment, and that's been filed by Building Kansas LLC. And the request is for an increase in the maximum allowable lot coverage for permitted uses in the R2 district to increase that from the current 35% to 40%. And Mr. Michelson will have a overview of that text amendment for you.
Thank you, Dean. So this case was filed by Building Kansas LLC, which is the developer for Aeroplanes subdivision. And the request is an amendment to Article 6, the District Regulations, Section 42, 174, 4, which is the R2 multifamily residential district regulations. And this would, the proposed amendment is to increase the maximum allowable lot coverage from 35% to 40%. So we'll go over a little bit of background about the, about how this case came about regarding aeroplanes, and then move into some justification for the broader text amendment that applies citywide. You can go ahead and go to the slides. All right. So Aeroplanes, it's a new residential development, it's currently under construction. It has about 170 lots in the subdivision, some of which are conservation easements. They're not all proposed as residential lots. The entire subdivision's zoned R2, which is multifamily residential. And the entire development is proposed as being single-family attached homes, which are townhomes. And the development of Aeroplanes is, is, has a, has a development agreement with the city that outlines three different types of units in the subdivision that have to meet some minimum square footage requirements for floor area. So there's three units that they're working with in that development. There's a type A, B, and C that are outlined in the, in the development agreement. And those, those track to a more common name that they use for the units. It's a Gulfstream, a Lear, and a Citation. And so that slide shows a little bit of a breakdown of what the, what the development agreement requirements are for that. And in 2023 to 2024, construction started, staff was reviewing the building permits, and construction began with about 25 lots that were on the west portion. You want to switch to the map real quick? They, these, construction started at the west portion of the, of the development. And there's a unique aspect to this subdivision where there's a very large natural gas pipeline that runs north-south, approximately a third of the way across it from, yeah, right around where the pointer is there. So in the end, lots on the west third or west quarter of that subdivision are slightly larger than lots as you move eastward. So that's a good thing to keep in mind as we go through this background. In 2025, this year, as staff was reviewing some of the next round of building permits, we encountered some issues with lot coverage. And this is as we started to review proposed construction that moved further east. So what we found is that in the Gulfstream and the Citation models, the lot coverage was working out to about 37 to 39% lot coverage as proposed. And both of those models have a building footprint of about 3,000 square feet. And the typical lot in that subdivision, as you move towards the east part of the subdivision, is about 71 feet wide by about 112 feet deep. That comes out to about 8,100 square feet, whereas the lots to the west are slightly larger. So as we encountered the issues, we checked it, checked multiple permits, and they all had a similar issue with those two models. So it became apparent that this was part of a broader problem that was going to pop up as we moved down the road with construction for that subdivision. So we had multiple discussions with the developers, went back and forth with some different approaches that they could, they could take to, to resolve the, the issue. The one we, that we agreed on that would be the best solution moving forward was a two-pronged approach where, that involved a, a variance, an administrative variance, to allow a slightly higher lot coverage for the building permit, building permits that were in review. And then the second part of that being proposing a text amendment to the R2 district regulations to actually increase the lot coverage for the city as a whole. Some of the other options would have involved requesting a variance from the BZA for higher lot coverage across the full subdivision, but that would have been narrowly focused on the aeroplanes addition without the broader benefit that, that staff feels could be brought by, by increasing the, the lot coverage requirement. So for these two parts, the first was administrative variance, that was AV 25-4, and that was approved for 12 lots in the, in the subdivision to allow a 40% lot coverage. And as I said, the lot coverage that was working out, that worked out too in the building permit review was around 37 to 39%. So we, we approved it at 40% to allow in the future a shed or something like that, because if we would have approved it at the exact lot coverage that was, that the, that the townhome took up on the lot, then that would leave no room for the owners in the future to place anything on the lot in, that is additional to the, the dwelling. The second part of it being the, the zoning ordinance text amendment, which is this case now. And what's being proposed is to increase the maximum allowed lot coverage for the R2 district from 35% to 40%. And this would address the issues for the remaining lots in aeroplanes. And it would also amend that requirement for the city as a whole. So that broadens the, the benefit from that change if, if it's approved. Just to quickly go through the, the administrative variance findings, what staff, what the findings that staff came up with to, to allow this variance was that it has unique lot constraints. As I said before, the lot sizes differ from where construction started, so that explained why that, the lot coverage issue wasn't encountered previously in the initial round of permits that were approved. The design consistency and no adverse impact, the, basically it would allow, approving the variance allowed the proposed can, design of the subdivision as a whole, where it alternates between three different models to provide some variation in the subdivision. And that, that would be, be able to be, remain consistent. And we didn't, staff didn't feel that it had any adverse impact on the subdivision as a whole by allowing that slightly larger, slightly higher lot coverage. It helped avoid unnecessary hardship, and it preserves the housing diversity. And by that we mean the diversity in the separate models that, that were being proposed. And it had a minimal and localized impact that was solely within the subdivision. And it, it did align with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And so the next slide shows a map of, of aeroplanes, of using their plat. This, this map kind of shows two different things. The, the lots in red with the yellow dot in them are the lots that we approved the, the administrative variance for. Slightly faded in the background, some lots are green and some lots are, are red. This shows lots where two of the models, the Gulfstream and the Citation, would not meet the lot coverage requirement currently of 35%. So as they build out the remaining parts of this subdivision, if one of those models were proposed, all of these lots would not allow it under the current zoning ordinance or, under the current lot coverage requirement. You can move on from that. So we'll go on to the nature of the request here and explain a little more about what the, the text amendment would do. And so again, it proposes to amend Section 1, Section 42, 174, 4 of the Slane Code of Ordinances. The proposed amendment would increase the maximum allowable lot coverage in the R2 district from 35% of the lot area to 40% of the lot area. And staff has reviewed this request and prepared the proposed zoning text amendment for the Planning Commission's consideration. That, that, this text is rather small on the screen here, but we do show what it is currently. So 42, 174 includes all the lot size requirements for the R2 district. And the last part of that, Section 4, subsection 4, is the maximum lot coverage. Currently, it breaks into two requirements. One is for permitted uses, where it's a maximum of 35% lot coverage, and then conditional uses can go up to 40%. If you want to switch to the next one, this is the proposed, would simplify that to 40% across the board. And it's probably worth noting at this point that it's not reflected in your report, but the lot coverage requirement was changed in 1989 from 40% to 35%. Dean may be able to expand a little more on that if he wants in the background.
Yeah, I think at the time, the Planning Commission did two things in 1989. Before that time, R2 allowed multifamily apartments or multifamily housing as a permitted use. And the Planning Commission thought R2 should be more for just twin homes and, and duplexes. And so apartments were made conditional uses. And so the thought was that 40% lot coverage was needed for apartments, which are conditional uses, but not, didn't need to be that great for townhomes or duplexes. But what we have found, and Mr. Michelson will cover, is since 1989, the size of townhomes and the size of duplexes has been increasing. And the, the parking of vehicles associated with those has changed. At that time, it wasn't unusual to have a duplex with no garage or a one-car garage. And now it's unthinkable to build a, a townhome that doesn't have at least a two-car attached garage. And so that's, that's one of the things that's changed since 1989.
Thanks, Dean. So going back to why we suggested this solution to, to building, to the applicant, goes back to the fact that we, staff was aware that there is an increased desire to have slightly higher density in some areas of the city, especially to support infill development. And it's supported, the, the need for that is supported by national trends and, and even locally, looking at where infill development could occur and the, the size of like, the areas that are zoned R2 and where those lots might be for infill type development. So in suggesting that we do a text amendment, it would help provide that change for the city to help support those other needs instead of just focusing narrowly on a solution for aeroplanes. So that's really why we are here today with the text amendment is to, we saw the benefit that could be applied to the city as a whole. And staff's main justification for this, as we've worked through everything, is that it aligns with the com, the comprehensive plan. It supports infill development, and it's supported by the data, by data that we'll go through. So as far as a comprehensive plan, the 2010, 2010 comprehensive plan in Chapter 2.1 shows suburban residential and urban residential, both include medium density development and townhomes. And they suggest, it suggests R2 as a potential zoning district for those types of neighborhoods. As far as suburban residential, that's single-family, low to medium density, and that's suggested as having single-family detached and attached. And the comp plan suggests two different densities for those, two to five units per acre for detached, and four to 10 units per acre for attached, so townhomes. Urban residential would support a higher density, and that would include single-family and multiple-family at a medium density, and that's eight to 20 units per acre. And that one specifically encourages a mix of housing types in a neighborhood, neighborhood setting. And as far as aeroplanes, the density in that subdivision was proposed as 6.2 units per acre. So that one, as you can see, would fall into either of those categories there. And so that amendment would, would support diverse housing and, and efficient land use and infill development there. As we go a little more into infill development in Chapter 2.1B, the next section of the comp plan, it states, "To provide a satisfactory quality of life for all of the citizens of Salina, the existing neighborhoods and services cannot be ignored. The future growth and development of Salina must balance infill and redevelopment within the existing neighborhoods and commercial areas, and new growth at the edges of the community, and in identified new growth areas." So it's, it's clearly saying that, that we should be supporting infill and redevelopment. And staff feels that this would help move towards that goal. The median R2 lot area in Salina is 7,000, is just over 7,000 square feet. So, so it, and that's the, that's the lowest median lot size of all the, the zoning districts in the city. And the amendment would, would aid with, again, with infill and reinvestment on older, smaller R2 lots. And it would also support what, what are called cottage or cluster type developments that wouldn't necessarily be able to meet the lot coverage if it, if it were, were not closer to 40% in a lot of cases. And the next slide shows a map of the R2 zone parcels in the city. So as you can see, they are pretty fairly spread out. They're, they're all over, and there is quite a few up towards downtown and the north part of the city, as well as like aeroplanes and other developments that are down in the southwest portion of the city there. And the next slide shows the, just a simple chart here. I'm sorry that you can't read those, the labels on there. But these are the, each of the zoning districts. And from the left, working to the right, you have the R, then R1, R2, R2.5, and R3. And that's the median size of the parcels, of the tax parcels in each of those zoning districts. So the R zoning district is a median of 10,957. R1 is eight, is just over 8,000, 8,050. R2 is 7,063. R2.5, those have a larger parcel size primarily because you start to include multifamily that's, has a lot more units on a larger parcel. And then the R3 has a median of 7,100 square feet. But that does help illustrate that, that the R2 district does have the smallest lots generally in the, in the city. So it would make sense that it's most likely to encounter lot coverage issues if you were to put your standard townhome or dwelling on there. And, and looking at the national and the local trends and findings, for local, again, like I said, the R2 district median lot size is the lowest of all the, of the zoning districts in the city. And from the administrative variance findings, we, staff felt that it was a modest increase and it had no expected negative impacts. When you look at the national trends, it's essentially, over time, the trend is larger dwellings and larger garages, or a higher percentage of dwellings have larger garages versus what they had previously over, over time. So if you want to move to the next slide, it'll help show this. This is the median and the average square feet of floor area in new single-family houses completed, that were completed. Just to be clear, this does include attached and detached. So this isn't broken down to only townhomes. But you can still see a very clear trend. There are some dashed lines here. This is 1977. This dashed line is 2003. The reason I included a line there is that the R1 district lot coverage was changed in 2003, so I felt that it would make a good reference point. And then we have 2023, which is the most recent data available. And the median size in 1977, a floor area was 1,610 square feet, whereas now the median is 2,233 square feet. So they have definitely increased over time. When we look at the next slide, this, this is a, what's called a 100% stacked chart. So along the bottom, you have time, and the different colors represent different categories of parking facilities for residential construction. So the full height of the colored area means 100% of all houses built. And what this shows is a proportion of it at any point in time. It shows a proportion that fit into each of those categories. So the purple one at the bottom is no garage or carport. There's a blue one right above that, and that is for carports. The green is a one-car garage, and the yellow represents garages that are two cars or more. So as you can see, as you move forward in time, you go from having fewer two-car garages, and you have a higher proportion that are one car or a carport or no garage at all. And as you, as you move toward present day, you have a very large, it's largely skewed towards two-car garages or larger. So it, this is based off of census data, the survey of construction data. It's released once a year. They're just on the verge of releasing last year's, but it's not out yet. And so this is just based on, on data up to, through 2023. And it starts at 1977. And so as we go into the, the impact of this, the, from a practical standpoint, we looked at, I looked at the, the 6,000 square foot minimum lot size in the R2 district. And if you, if you take that 6,000 square feet and you look at what the largest footprint you could build on that lot is, at 35%, that's 2,100 square feet. The bottom, the bottom row of this, so this is at 6,000. The bottom one is, oh, I'm reflecting on somebody. The bottom one is 3,000, because townhomes are often split down the middle after they're constructed. So you end up with two, 3,000 square foot lots. But we're primarily looking at the top row. And that would be a 2,100 square foot footprint that you could place there under a 35% lot coverage. At 40%, you could place a 2,400 square foot footprint there. So that's an additional 300 square feet that would be available to someone building a home, either infill or in the case of aeroplanes. It, it allows a little bit extra space, and that does track with the, the numbers that are in the national trend. So again, that median today, or as of 2023, was 2,233 square feet. So this would just help get us closer to what the median is nationally on this. And, and again, on, the scope of this is only to change the lot coverage. It's not proposing to change anything else for the R2 district requirements. So the actual lot width and depth requirements, the setbacks and the heights are all proposed as remaining the same. This only changes the percentage of the lot that you can cover with structures. And we'll move into the, the alternatives that the Planning Commission has. Number one would be to recommend approval of the proposed change to the R2 district lot coverage limitations as requested by Building Kansas LLC. Number two would be to recommend approval of the proposed amendment with any modifications, additions, and/or deletions of the, that the commission deems appropriate. Option three would be to table the matter for further study or public input. And option four would be to take no action to change the existing R2 district lot coverage limitations and recommend denial of the, of application Z25-4. And staff would recommend alternative number one, that the maximum allowable lot coverage in the R2 district be increased from 35 to 40%. And the reasons that, that staff feels that that would be the appropriate alternative is that it accommodates a modern housing designs, and it's, is consistent with the, and the existing development agreement for aeroplanes to support their proposed housing. It aligns with the comprehensive plan to support infill development, housing diversity and density. And it's supported by the national data trends and local findings. It provides more flexibility for developers, home builders, and homeowners in designing buildings to maximize the use of their lots. And staff does not feel that there would be any anticipated negative impacts from the change. And with that, staff's available for any questions you might have.
I think just for the benefit of the commission, I would add that, just a part of your thinking, items that do count towards lot coverage is if somebody buys a home or they buy a townhome, and they want to put a cover deck on the back, that counts towards lot coverage. Or if you want to put a, a 12 by 16 shed in your backyard, that counts towards lot coverage. So our, our comment that, when we were looking at this, that you want to have some latitude with lot coverage just from the initial construction, is that's to allow the, the purchaser of that home to have the flexibility to add a cover deck or to add a shed or something, and not, not bump into lot coverage issues. And so that's, that's what we took into account in looking at this and looking at 40%.
And I'll, I'll actually add to that. So lot coverage is defined in Section 42, 703, and that definition is, "Lot coverage is that percentage of a lot which, when viewed directly from above, would be covered by a structure or structures, or any part thereof, excluding projecting roof heaves." So that's the actual definition from, from the code.
We do have Lance Cochran here, who's representing one of the principals in Building Kansas that's doing the aeroplanes project. So if you have questions of him or questions of him generally about the project, this would be your opportunity to do that.
Thank you, fellows. Before we have the applicant come up, are there any other questions for staff specifically?
I'm just curious why this came up at this time, this, this application and this issue. I mean, you mentioned the history and the, the design and over time compared to 1989, but why did it come up now?
It came up because as we looked at the development agreement, and we looked at the master plan for the models that they were trying to distribute through the subdivision, we found that the, the Citation and the Gulfstream models would not fit on the majority of the lots in the eastern part of the subdivision. And it came up now because the lots on the western portion have gas pipelines and have electric transmission lines. That made those lots artificially deeper, which resulted in the lots as you move east becoming shallower. And it didn't become apparent that those changes were there until we started getting permits as we moved east.
How many of the lots are at the 39% coverage?
How many of the lots are at the 39% coverage?
It's not all the lots that were highlighted in red, because not all of them have the Gulf Stream or citations on them. I'll defer that question to Mr. Michelson.
How many of the lots have 39% coverage already as built?
Ads that are already built?
No, that are going to be built, or whichever.
I only calculated lot coverage for the ones that were actually proposed, that we had plans for. So that's why the administrative variance was constrained to 12 lots. We had proposed plans for those, so I was able to actually calculate lot coverage. And like I said, it ranged from 37% to 39%. And that depended on essentially which block it was on. I don't remember.
I think Amelia Lane, Amelia Lane block has the shortest lots in this subdivision. They're only 112 feet deep.
So that's where the variation in it came from, but they were generally all right around 38%.
Okay. I guess my concern would be that 40 isn't giving some of those people enough to build a shed or covering, because going from, on your slide, going from 35 to 40 only gave 150 square feet on each side of the duplex, which is enough for one shed. So going from 37 or 39 to 40, for some of them, is not enough to do anything with.
That's true. There is a couple additional factors to that, though, in addition to lot coverage, is you have the setback requirement. So even if, in theory, you were to allow a slightly higher lot coverage, they're still going to have the setback requirements that they have to meet. So even if you allowed, you know, 50% lot coverage, you're still likely on the smaller lots to encounter an issue where it doesn't meet setback and separation between structures. There's requirements for detached sheds and garages to be separated from the principal dwelling by a certain amount of feet. So it's true, you're correct in that, that you could run into, still run into, a lot coverage issue. But it would also be correct to say that there is a lot of lots in town that run into that.
What about like a covered patio, if they tried to add that? That's usually pretty close or attached to the house already.
True. If it's an attached addition, that's...
I think the other thing that we would note is that the examples that we put on the screen and were in your staff report was based on the 6,000-square-foot lot. And these lots, the lots in red, while they're smaller, most of them are in the 7,000 or 7,200 to 8,000 range. And so the allowable increase in the footprint is going to be more than what that table showed. I might see which planner has the fastest calculator, but if we had an 8,000-square-foot lot, the additional allowable footprint's going to be bigger on an 8,000-square-foot lot than on a 6,000.
So most of those lots in red are 71 feet wide, and they're 112 feet deep. And that's 8,100 square feet. It's right at 8,100 square feet. So the example was based on the absolute minimum lot size. That's what says, even at the minimum lot size, you would gain 300 square feet. These lots are bigger, so you would have to calculate for each one. Most of the, they're consistent along the length of the blocks, but as you move from Block 4, it's all the way on the west, those are deeper lots, that's why they're all green. All three models fit. The ones in red are ones where two of the models won't fit. But those go from 115 feet, or 112, to, some of these are 115 feet. It's kind of a lot by lot.
So if you start at the very west, and you have the Block 4, which is between Tim Rogers Lane and Amelia Lane, this is where you have the 25-foot gas easement. And so these properties are, these lots are deeper, because there's a lot less buildable area because of that gas easement. You can't build in the rear. So this lot is 150.88, and Lot 18 is 140. So you go from almost 151 and 140 back-to-back, to then between Amelia Lane and Wright Lane, which is where the story kind of started, you've got a lot depth of 112 plus 115. So it's substantially shorter block face here between Amelia and Wright. And then as we go further to the east still, we get into 115 and 115 pretty consistently. So the shortest block face is this Block 5 between Amelia and Wright Lane, and that's where the problem was originally identified, once we started building in this area.
Well, whether the problem was originally identified there or not, all of these blocks in red are still going to have the same issue with two of the models, correct?
We're going to have the same issue throughout the entire aeroplane subdivision, and we anticipate having this issue in other parts of town, just because of the trend that we noticed while we're doing our research and talking to the developer, that, you know, you have attached garages that are usually two carriages now, or two-vehicle garages versus single-car garages. And you have footprints that are typically just a larger size for your houses now than you did historically.
So to the point the commissioner was making, we're still going to be handcuffing individuals in these red-colored blocks here if they have two of the, one of the two of the three types that are already causing the issue.
Well, if at 40% lot coverage, there wouldn't be an issue for the initial build-out of the subdivision. At 40%, all three of their models would fit on any of the lots.
But 40%, this whole screen would be green?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. This illustrates where two of the models don't fit. So that's all the red means, at 35% lot coverage, the current, the current regulation.
But I think the point was, even if we go to 40%, they are going to be extremely limited by what outbuildings, or sheds, or whatever they are able to put out there.
It would allow them a few hundred square feet.
Maybe not just this, but growing in the future, if everything's growing bigger, I'd hate to just stop here at a small, give them a small amount, when giving them a little bit more would give a little bit more buffer room for future build-outs and stuff, too. I don't know what that number would end up being, or whatever, but I think that not.
So we mainly tried to stay, we use the 40% because that is consistent with when you move up to the R2.5, that allows a 40% lot coverage. And previously, the R2 district was 40% until 1989. So that's what would solve the immediate issue for that subject, for aeroplanes itself. And then it's fitting with the other regulations that we have in the zoning ordinance for lot coverage, and historically, what it was. So that's where we based the 40% on.
I get that, but building forward to the future, I think maybe it needs to be a little bit more. I get it solves the immediate need.
So for the lots, the lots that are 8,000 square feet and above, they would be able to have structures that are over 3,200 square feet, so a lot of coverage. 40% of 8,000 is 3,200. And what are the units, the Gulf Stream units, the larger ones?
They're right about 3,000.
Right around 3,000. So even the largest units would still have a little bit of extra room.
And that's duplex, so divided in half?
So in theory, if you have a 3,000-square-foot footprint on a 8,000-square-foot lot, and you can build up to 3,200 square feet, being 40% of that, that would allow room for a 200-square-foot shed, which it's, I mean, that's a...
The 10-by-20?
Yeah, 10-by-20. It's a pretty big shed. That would allow for two 10-by-10 sheds, which are a pretty common size for detached sheds. So it would still allow a reasonable amount of small storage.
Is that on a duplex, though?
That's per side, yeah.
Per side?
Yeah.
200 per side?
No, no, that would be a lot as a whole.
Yeah.
If they get split down the middle, then you're talking, assuming they're symmetrically split.
So what happens if one neighbor builds like a 10-by-20 shed, and the other one gets nothing? I don't know how that would work out.
It's come for a server.
Well, if they split, if they split the lots,
Okay.
then they would each have their own lot coverage.
Okay.
And so, I mean, we're working with very generic scenarios here, so...
I get that, yeah. I'm not trying to like get the exact numbers or whatever, but I just think that allowing a little bit more play would be beneficial, too. I mean, we're trying to grow and build homes, too, that would just not hamstring multiple other developers and stuff like that.
Any other questions for staff?
The 40% is just a guideline. There are some, there are some communities that really want to encourage density that allow 45%. I think what we were trying to go off of was that a lot of these were right at the 38%. It wasn't going to 40% to just allow the townhome. And then the other thing being that if your lots are 8,100 square feet or larger, then the square footage that you're going to be able to add is more in the range of 400 square feet instead of the examples we gave with the 6,000-square-foot lots.
Pardon my ignorance on this, but is the 40%, is that, or what are the maximums in each of the residential zonings right now? Is 40% the highest?
We have it in your, I don't think we have it in a slide. We have it in your staff report as an attachment.
It's right after, it's the first attachment right after the staff report.
So there's a table in there, and it starts with agricultural district, and it goes to... So what you see is that the, and we ran into this in, as Dustin referred to, in 2003, we discussed with the planning commission, a text amendment that would increase the maximum lot coverage in an R1 district to 35%. It was 30%. And as we discussed today, the increased size of dwellings and the increased size, particularly of garages, it was almost unheard of up till then of having a three-car garage. And so if you have a garage that's three-car, then you're increasing the footprint of the house and the lot coverage. And so R has generally the biggest lots, and it has a 30% limitation. R1 is 35. Right now, R2 is 35, and we think that's too low. So we're recommending to be bumped to 40. And then R2.5 and R3 are 40%. Those are generally developments that have multiple buildings on a single lot. So if you're thinking about the reserves at Prairie Glen Apartments across from the Jerry Ivy Park, or you're talking about the apartments by the mall, or the apartments that you looked at, horizontal apartments out on West Magnolia, those generally don't have problems coming over the 40% coverage as we get into infill areas. Then even the 40% for multifamily may need to be looked at, too. But that table that's there, that's what we're looking at. And so we don't have any districts right now that allow over 40% lot coverage.
And I appreciate the effort, and I actually did look at this sheet before I got here. I just missed that right-hand column. I appreciate the, I appreciate consistency. So would it not be a simple thing for us just to make one percentage across all of the residential zoning districts to alleviate questions? I mean, I know we're going from 30 to 40 in R, but if we were going to go to 40, let's just make it 40 across the board for residential zoning. Is there a con to that downfall?
The only con primarily is that particularly in the R districts is the lot sizes are so large that you're not going to run into that. The other thing, and it was something that we did at the same time, but as, and that's, it's just the connection between the two. One of the things we had to do around the same time as we were looking at that is that we had to increase the runoff coefficients, and we had to increase the detention pond sizes in our residential neighborhoods. Because if you increase the amount of coverage on a lot and reduce the green space and the pervious surface where water can soak in, the more of a lot that you cover with rooftop, or cover with pavement, the more runoff you had. And so what we found was that we had a whole bunch of subdivision residential detention ponds that were undersized, because people were covering more and more of their lots with impervious surface. So there's something to be said for that. What we're doing is kind of responding. We found that because of the growing footprints, that 30% was too limiting. So that was increased to 35% in 2003. There's something to be said for going 40% across the board. It's just that there are other things that come into play as well. And in our experience in reviewing single-family homes in a development like Stone Lake or Grand Prairie, we're seeing lot coverages of like 22, 24% on average. And so the idea of increasing it to 40 just is not, hasn't been an issue. The other thing about R2 is we have a lot of single-family neighborhoods around the downtown area that are zoned R2, just because they have very small lot sizes. And R2 has the smallest lot size. So we have a lot of single-family homes in R2 as well. But that is, that is something that could certainly be looked at across the board. But our, kind of the way we take the temperature on things is if we start getting, and Ms. Paget serves as the representative of the planning commission on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and if we start getting a lot of variance applications based on, that just have a repeated pattern of bumping up against lot coverage, or doing even administrative variances because of lot coverage, then maybe we need to take a look at that and see if it's too limiting or too restrictive. So that's the approach we took here with the lot coverage in R2, not only as it relates to aeroplanes, but across the community.
If we did go that route on trying to do what Chad said, increasing everything to 40%, would that require another public hearing and another?
Yeah, it would require the planning commission. Regardless of what you decided in this, what's before you today, then if you wanted to have that looked at, then you would make a motion after this, directing staff to look at the lot coverage in all the residential districts. And then that would allow us to go back and do that.
Personally, I would, I don't want to hold up this situation just because of that. I'd rather we go ahead and decide on this, and then...
This is a separate matter that's before you, but if you want to follow up on it with looking at the other districts and the other limitations, that's why we gave you this table, so you could see the bigger picture and how they all relate to each other. And it's supposed to be kind of a zoning, it's referred to as pyramidal zoning, but as you, as the number gets bigger, that means more density and more intensity. So if you have an RS zone, that's one acre minimum lot sizes, and you don't have lot coverage issues. And we generally don't in the R district, because a lot of those lots are well over 10,000 square feet. It's when we get into R1 and R2, which are most common. it's when we get into R1 and R2, which are most common districts, where developers are not really increasing the size of lots. Lots are staying pretty much the same size, but if you try to put more footprint on the same-size lot, that's where you bump into lot coverage.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Thank you for your patience. You have, you have any comments you'd like to make, Mr. Cochran? Anybody have questions of the applicant?
I do, yep. Were you, on some of these, I guess, layouts and stuff like that, were you aware that they were gonna be close to hitting that minimum? Were they designed that way, or?
So originally, this was set up, and we were told that the lots would be set as R2.5. And so through negotiations with the city, it came back that we would change this over, the whole development to R2. And so that's kind of was the result. It was just mutual mistake of fact. And I think possibly, they believed that we were still under the 40%. So. And as far as you're talking, the size, coverage, keep in mind, we have a, an HOA out there that will cover all the sprinkler systems and mowing and all that stuff. So I can't imagine that people will put a really large building or, you know, outbuilding there, because there would not be a need. Hopefully, they have plenty of storage. That's why we're trying to build a bigger unit for them, so that they don't have a problem with that. And, and again, we'll be doing all the mowing, because we, we have that all set up, and that's part of their HOA fees that they pay every month.
How many of these have covered porches or decks as part of their initial construction?
There are no covered. I mean, I think there's people that are asking for small, you know, units, I think they called it cat, or they call, they called it something like that, where they had a little area for their cats, but they already have a little deck area, and there's a separate, you know, a separation fence for them, so they have a little private area.
So nothing like a patio that's outdoor, that's covered or anything already with these?
Not yet.
Could you state your name and address for those watching online, just so they'll know you?
Lance Cochran, I'm the managing member of Building Kansas LLC.
And with the 40%, is that gonna accommodate what is necessary for you guys to finish out this phase?
Yes, it will. We've been working with city staff on this for a while to try to figure out the best solution for us. Because, you know, the reality is, we want to build the three types of units, because again, we have older people that probably want a two-bedroom. We have young families that want what was called the Gulfstream, which is a three-bedroom upstairs, there's a large area in, in the living room, and, and then the other one is sort of a hybrid, I will call it, of the, of the, what's called the Citation, the two-bedroom. So there's two bedrooms downstairs, and then there's another full bedroom and kind of a play area upstairs. And so we're trying to accommodate as many people as possible, so that we can just, you know, build the community and, and hopefully get more housing.
You guys were aware of the 40%, 35% already, when you were doing the layout on the lots and stuff? So that way you were, when you...
So again, when we, when we had our engineers lay this out, we were, the understanding for our development group was that we were actually going to be zoned R2.5, which was already at the two, at the 40%. And that's why it was set up that way. So through negotiation with the city, they changed it to R2, and that's where the problem came in.
Okay, so, okay.
So why was it changed to R2?
You'd have to ask the city staff on that. I think it was just kind of a mutual agreement, they have a little more control over certain things, and, and we were fine with that.
At what point did that change? In the beginning, before it, building started, or?
Yes. Yeah, it was right, it was right at the time that we started the plat.
And so that's where I was asking earlier, it's like, why is this issue coming now? We're already in the building stages, right? We're halfway through it. So I'm a little confused on that.
So I am, Dean, when he gets back down, or Dustin, might be able to speak to why it changed from 2.5 to 2. But the reason why it came up at this point was as they showed on the map, as you work your way east, the lots got progressively smaller. So once the development agreement was decided, and the lots were zoned R2, the lot coverage was 35%. So when staff began doing their reviews for the first 25 homes that were on the far west side of the subdivision, on these much bigger lots, they were under the 35% lot coverage, because the lots themselves were bigger. So it came up at this point because aeroplanes had put in for more permits further east, and those lots that were further east were smaller in size. And as we were beginning our reviews, we noticed that they were exceeding the 35% lot coverage.
Okay, so all the lots weren't applied for in the beginning?
They're, they're, they submit rounds, they submit the building permits in small sets, because they're building them out, you know, over time. They're not, they're not submitting 150 building permits at once, they're just submitting them as they're building it out. Construction started on the west side of the subdivision, closer to Centennial Road. Those were reviewed and approved, they met the 35% lot coverage at that time. So as you move from the west towards the east through the subdivision, the lots progressively get smaller. And part of that is due to the large easement that runs north-south over block, what's that first block that's all green?
Block four.
Block four. Down the middle of block four, there is a 50-foot-wide natural gas pipeline easement. So the problem starts to occur once you jump across that. Though, that block is larger, to be able to accommodate that easement, plus have enough room to build on, so it, it was, it's a case where we didn't know the problem existed until, until now. So as they built those, and then they submitted permits for block, block five, and the ones, the lots there colored in red to the north of that, that's what we were reviewing when we noticed that the lot coverage didn't meet the 35%.
So we looked at those west lots, on the west, western portion of subdivision, the biggest lot coverage that we had there was 32%. And the smallest was 18%. And so we were building, we were building the same-sized townhomes, and they were covering 20% of the lot. But because of the unusual topography on this subdivision, they had to make the lots on the west exceptionally deeper, because they had power lines and gas lines running through there. And when you make those disproportionately deeper, that leaves less depth for the lots as you move east. And so we had, by our count, we had issued over 20 permits for townhomes, and the highest lot coverage we encountered was 32%. And so until we started getting footprints for the same units on the lots that were much shallower, we did not recognize that that was gonna be an issue.
Dean, while you were away, the question arose, why this was negotiated from R2.5 to R2. Can you speak to that at all?
Yes. That, I would be the blame or responsibility for that, but that's because R2.5 is what you have with the apartments over there on Virginia Drive, and that, that allows apartments, and it allows, over there, they have a density of about 20 dwelling units per acre, and this has a density of six dwelling units per acre. So we were looking for the zoning district that best matched what they were proposing to do. If we zoned this R2.5, then they could build apartments on the lots if they so chose. And so we use R2.5 for our denser multifamily apartments. So the apartments next to the mall are R2.5, the apartments on Virginia Drive by Menards are R2.5, reserves at Prairie Glen is R2.5. And all the former Air Force Base housing to the south is all zoned R2. So we felt that R2, from a land use standpoint, was the most compatible. Turned out, we were wrong in terms of the lot coverage, but we think we were right as far as the R2 matches what they're trying to do here, which is build two-unit townhomes. And all around the community on maps that we've shown you, whether it's in Stone Lake, or whether it's in the Ryan Edition at the southeast corner of Ohio and Schilling, or whether it's on Saddle Brook Drive, we've used R2 zoning for townhomes. And the reason R2.5 wasn't recommended is because that allows for apartments and allows for much higher density. And you didn't need R2.5 to build townhomes. But if we had R2.5 zoning, we wouldn't be bumping up against the 40%, so...
I'm gonna change my stance here a little bit on this, I guess. I'm okay with the 40%, because at the end of the day, no matter what we raise it to, developers are gonna come in and just try to match, like you said, your engineers knew the 40%. They worked up to that wall and kind of stopped. It's only gonna leave people who buy these houses with whatever amounts left over. So I think the real problem is that when we do new construction, there needs to be allowable square footage left for the homeowners. So, but that's not what this is about, so I guess the 40% is what I'm okay with on this one.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I don't see anybody here. Do we have anybody online?
We do not have anyone from the public online.
All right, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion at this time.
I'd move that we approve application Z25-4 to allow this 35 to 40, to increase from 35 to 40%.
I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second for approval of application Z25-4, that is increasing the lot coverage from 35% to 40% for the R2 district. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that carries unanimously.
So that will go as a recommendation to the City Commission, to them on the 23rd of June.
All right. That is all of our legislative matters. I don't see any administrative on our agenda. Is there any unfinished or other business for the commissioners?
The only other business we have is that there will be a meeting of the commission on June 17th, but I will not be there, because I'll be retiring on June 13th. And so this is my final Planning Commission meeting, I mean it this time. And I just did some counting, and I counted up that I had attended 760 Salina Planning Commission meetings, and this will be my, my last one, so...
I think that's a record that's gonna stand for a while.
That's a lot of meetings to keep track of, so... And so we, we do have some refreshments in the side room next door, if you want to stop there and get a refreshment and visit after we adjourn, you're certainly welcome to do that, so...
Thank you. And on behalf of the commission, thank you, Dean, for your service to the community for these hundreds of years that you have been here. Hundreds of meetings you've attended, hundreds of meetings, anyway. Anything else from the commission? Again, no, nobody online for public forums, so I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second to adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
We are dismissed.